Left the meeting.
Oh, she left?
Oh, I can get out of the meeting.
Alright, I'll call the meeting back to order. Yeah, we're down one. Yeah. We have a going on to agenda item ten point one, Quality Management Plan. Get a motion on this one, Counselor Gilroy?
The council approve and endorse the updated Quality Management Plan and direct administration to submit the form by March thirty first, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, uh, do you want to just give us a little bit more on this, Brian?
Uh, the town has Q and Ps for building and fire and gas. And now they want us to submit a quality plan every, any early days, so. That's why we need to send it in, so we comply.
I had one question, and it was around, uh, do we already do everything in this agreement? Or is there something in this agreement that we don't do?
No.
What's that?
No, we do what is in the agreement.
We're, we're also mandated by the Federation.
Yeah.
So, everything that's contained in this is also contained in our O and M manual from the Federation.
Okay, yeah, so this is, uh, this is just, uh, going through and they're covering their honorable butts, right?
Compliance.
Yeah. But we have all of these things, the emergency preparedness and response, the construction testing and commissioning, and all of that stuff is already there. Alright, any other questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is carried. Uh, BLC, Regional Emergency Management. Counselor Gilroy?
That the town of High Prairie will support the town's involvement in Big Lakes County's Alberta Partnership Grant Application for a regional emergency management implementation project, and will provide a letter of support to Big Lakes County.
Okay. Anything you want to add to this one?
Uh, no, just that, this is what basically we've been pushing forward for probably the last two years, and it kind of sat in limbo. I never heard nothing more on it, so I phoned Pat Alansky, who's the Director of Disaster Services for Big Lakes, and kind of lit the fire again, and then he started the paperwork to apply for the grant and whatever, move it forward. So, it's basically us, Swan Hills, and Big Lakes that would be in this region. So, we going forward, if there is an emergency within the area, we're not duplicating services. We have, don't have to each train our own people. We can provide for training for some of our staff, but it'll all be provided from the other municipal entities also. So, it's a regional partnership, so I, it's nothing but positive going forward, so.
Counselor Gilroy?
Uh, knowing what we went through this past summer, will this include, um, uh, some inputs from FCSF? And they're, because they are part of a disaster partners?
Not at this time. They're, they'll be mentioned within the plan and all that stuff.
As long as they know what part of the plan, that's all I want, so.
Any other questions on this one, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Moving on to item ten point three, Member at Large for the High Prairie Library Board. Counselor Long?
A council appoint Reeve Richard Smart to the High Prairie Library Board as Member at Large until the next order meeting.
Okay.
Any appointments to our library board has to be made by his council, so. I don't know why all of a sudden it, somebody backed out from one of their counselors that were appointed previously, or?
He's a member at large, though.
But this says Member at Large for this.
Yeah.
What does it mean, Member at Large, it would be an L?
So, it's a good question, I do, I think what they're asking, if this is a member at large, did we advertise for a member at large?
No.
And so, why are they, do, are we short a member at large?
Yeah, he was on the library board.
I'm not on the library board, but that was my concern is, why aren't we calling it as it is? That he's an elected official on the board instead of a member at large? Because your member at large should be someone neutral from your community. Like, I had no, no qualms about him being on there, but calling who he is, he's an elected official on there.
It, uh, the request came from the library.
No, the county.
But the county, but they wouldn't have, if it would have, if he wouldn't have been there as a member at large, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have put Reeve in front of him. They wouldn't have come from the county. Alright, I guess it would have, they, they appoint the member at large.
So, what is the supporting documentation, say, what's the letter actually?
Your.
I'll have to go get it.
So, yeah, because what, like, for example, we have Donna as our appointee, as a, she's not a member at large, she's an appointment from our, from our organization. The same would be for any county person would be the representative of the county, not a member at large.
Correct. Can you, can you go grab that letter, Marion?
Yeah, we got a lot of side discussions going on, so we should make sure we're all on the same page. Because, yeah, I think the question is all around, there's members from each council that's appointed, and then there's members at large that are appointed, so they already have a.
They appoint a member at large.
Okay, so they have.
And then that, that member has to be appointed by this council.
And we have a member at large that we appoint also.
Yes.
Okay, so this is their member at large, and then our, our member at large. Okay, so that, that makes more sense, I'm just trying to.
Should we take the word Reeve on there, and so just write it to Smart?
Call that S and D.
To Reeve, Reeve.
Good question. Well, let's, here, let's, Counselor Rose had a good question.
Oh, I just, I wondered if maybe they couldn't find a member at large for their, and that, so one of the counselors is just taking that position? And that may, that maybe, that's why I asked her for the background documentation, because maybe that's what they.
That's probably the only thing that could be.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Gilroy?
I guess the point that I would get at is it, and I think, um, Counselor Stenhouse suggested the same thing. If, if it didn't have the title Reeve, it would seem like a member at large. But it, with the title on it, it seems as though it's, it's an appointee from their council. And so, I wonder if we should, need to just drop the idea of, uh, the, the actual title? And just put it as the person that that's what they want? Know what I mean?
If he's been given a story from his council to sit on the board.
He's one of his public citizens, not a Reeve.
It says council member, Counselor, it says Council Richard Smart.
And, and it also says earlier in there, this is member at large appointment. So, it's, it's kind of contradicting itself, it says member at large, and then it says a council appointment, but I, does it matter anything terribly? We're, we're working on the, this nitpicky details, but the only thing would be that, did we advertise for member at large and?
We did.
Already in the county, yeah.
It's their member.
It's their member at large.
Something doesn't matter to us at all?
You'll do a great job.
Okay, we had lots of discuss, any other questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Moving on to item ten point four, the Fees Bylaw. Motion. I'll make a motion that council give first reading to Fees Bylaws zero one, two thousand and twenty, this, the twenty eighth day of January, and forward any amendments to the Bylaw Review Committee for further discussion. Alright, so any? Do we have comments for them, or we can save them and forward it to them at another time, or any general?
We, we can go through, and I can give you background and highlighted information, the changes that were made.
Sure.
Okay. So, if you go to page three of thirteen or a hundred and twenty eight in the agenda, it says active business license, commercial and residential that have received their reminder will not be, reminder letter will not be prorated. That's for your, the business license? So, that wasn't included in the previous bylaw. Let's just letting, uh, business owners know that if they come in late or whatever, that, and they were sent the letter that they're not, they have to pay it back from January one. Uh, if we go to page one thirty, uh, the top one twenty, one days are advertising in a local paper, website, and the town office is new changes in the MGA regarding our advertising for development permits. Uh, the part about subdivision fees service provided by Munis, McKenzie Municipal Services Agency, MMSA. Um, them rates are, so that, uh, the original rates were lower than that, so basically the town is picking up the difference. So, these are their rates for subdivisions. So, it will not cost the municipality going forward, so this will cover all the MMSA's costs, so.
Do we have any subdivisions moving ahead, like it's just, no, okay, that's.
But it's, it's gotta be in there.
It's in there, okay, I was just wondering, I was hoping.
There is a type error on page one thirty one at the bottom. Uh, it says water rates residential. And it says two ninety six per cubic meter, that should be three fifteen. But that's, that's pick up, it's just a type error, and we're gonna change that going forward.
So, residential and residential are the same?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're both three fifty per cubic meter. But that's just a type error, just to let council know. On page one thirty five, fees will not be refunded after the disclosure date. So, up to this time, the staff regarding, uh, the Assessment Review Board has gone through all the process, set up the meetings, done all the work, and, um, the, the fees will not be refunded after that date. If somebody wants to pull their application, so it's, it's just to cover costs on that that we've incurred already at the municipality, so.
What's the disclosure date, and how does somebody get that?
Um, that will be listed on, uh, them dates are listed on the, uh,
Yeah.
Assessment Review Board either, depending on, uh, the time.
Right, I'm not exactly sure on the timelines, I think they have, off the top of my head, thirty days to provide the disclosure, and then there's a certain waiting period after they've accepted it all. But by that time, everything's been set up. You know, members have been contacted and whatnot, so.
So, they're given a disclosure date in their letter, so it's quite, okay.
Um, if we go to page one thirty six, uh, at the bottom of the page, all withdrawals are subject to an administration fee, and must either be medical or fourteen, fourteen days prior to the first lesson or class. There was a ten dollar fee for that, for, for administration fee. And, uh, the evaluation for grade, all grade fours, and it's only grade fours, for their swimming ability at the, at the pool. The, uh, aquatics facility manager tells me that they have a forum that the schools tend home to each parent to say how good your kid can swim, and lots of them don't fill them out, so they, for safety reasons, the staff still have to put these kids in the, the ability that they can swim on.
They give them all an assessment.
Assessment, yeah, so it, it's basically a five dollar fee that'll probably be going back to the school divisions.
Maybe the parents.
Parents, parents, or whatever the school division will send it to the school. Uh, these days, for the, uh, part of the recreation here, have all been discussed with the Recreation Committee at the last meeting, so. On page one thirty seven, Water Safety Instructor, that's, uh, brand new. And if you look down on the line under, uh, the line underneath, there was a Water Safety Instructor certification, and that's a two hundred dollar fee. But to get a, what, to become a Water Safety Instructor, the fee is three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents, and three ninety with the GST. So, that's, that's newly added in there. Um, the no tax for registrants under fourteen years of age. I don't believe the fourteen year of age was in the original bylaw, so that was added as a clarification.
These are all cost recovery?
These ones here?
Yeah, all these.
Uh, no, it's, it would.
At least.
The, uh, the junior lifeguard, the babysitting, and the stage saver, it was just a clarification for the fourteen years of age as well. The, the fees stayed the same. And the last page, there was no changes, Marion highlighted, but she don't know what, so. So, that, that's the changes to the fees by law. But it'll be going back to the Bylaw Review Committee.
I just had a couple of just questions, first one is, just on the last page, I sort of wrote down, it says the birthday party rental, you can rent the, the arena, and includes one hour of ice and one hour in the party room. I wasn't sure where the party room was.
I can tell you that, because I was there on Sunday.
Oh, okay, what's the party room in your?
Okay, the, uh, the ice rental that, uh, the party that my daughter went to on Sunday was at the Wharf Buchanan Center. You have the arena, and then you went upstairs, there's some, on the top floor, there's the stands there, but you go right through to the very end. And it's the very last enclosed area, the far end. So, that's.
Yeah, no, I, I know the room then, I just didn't hear it called the party room before. But if there's a party there, and I know we'll find people in, right, you gotta be there. Uh, and then there's no fees for currently leased out, that highlighted on the last page.
Yeah, that should have been highlighted.
And it shouldn't even be in there, should it? Period.
That's a concern.
What's the concern, right, like, if that should be?
That we have that beautiful dance stage room, and we're not renting it up. That's my concern. No, it doesn't have nothing to do with the fees.
You get on the marketing table, you get, you get here.
And our.
But this, it says it's currently leased out, what does that mean?
Yeah, that should just come up there, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. Counselor Gilroy?
Just, just a, a quick question. When I'm looking at the damage deposit, so that would be for, say, a dance group to have for the entire time? Or a person wanting to have it for one, one performance?
One hour?
I'm just wondering if there should be like a two, a different one between some, was it long term and then a, a one night thing? For example, if you had it, um, say we had the, the First Nations, we're gonna show another movie, such as, that one of us breaking the silence on, on what they've won, they've gone through, would they then pay the fifteen hundred and seventy five, uh, deposit for that one night showing that movie? And then, or just?
You should ask for the bylaw. Well, that's actually a recreation for me, that I don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
So, we're gonna need to, uh, have a recreation.
Clarification.
Yeah, just a clarification on that one.
To give us the answer on that, because that deposit, I bet you that has to do with when it was rented out to dance. And that's why it says no fees currently leased out, like, it was probably, this is probably all what was the old policy based on having a relationship with dance.
Yes.
If you look at farther than damage deposit, it would be in a winter or summer, it's twenty five hundred.
If you have a birthday party, you have to put a twenty five hundred.
Oh, that's correct.
No.
A hundred dollar, a hundred dollar fee and twenty five hundred bucks to.
That is for weddings and stuff, like, that's for most, like, families after.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you rent it for, for a wedding, arena stuff, it's a twenty five hundred.
But in the winter, you're not renting it, but it says winter rolls, well, you can, but, uh.
You rent it for a term, you have a damage deposit.
Okay, so, but if you rent it for one hour to have a birthday party, you gotta pay the twenty five hundred.
There's, there's a clarification issue.
That's right, and it's the same with the one on that you.
Those are the ones that are being drafted.
Yeah.
Those are the four changes.
With the thought for the Bylaw Review Committee.
Yeah. Thanks, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Okay, and then if there's any other changes that you picked up, you can pass them on to Michael.
Uh, there he is.
Okay, so we, this is just to give it first reading, and there's gonna be a few changes and clarifications that the Bylaw Committee's gonna do. So, a vote to pass first reading, all those in favor? It is carried. Moving on to, um, the repeal of bylaw zero five, two thousand and nineteen. Get a motion on that one? Counselor Long?
That council give first reading to bylaw zero three dash twenty twenty to the repeal of bylaw zero five dash twenty twenty, this twenty eighth day of January, two thousand and twenty.
Counselor Stenhouse?
Okay, you have to look at all your options there. There's a table that we're repealing the bylaw zero five, two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
This twenty eighth day, they're all the options have the wrong date on.
What's it saying? We're giving a reading for a, a bylaw that hasn't even been, or we're getting what hasn't been put in yet.
Should be twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. Could catch.
No, it wasn't me, it was our council.
His eyesight is twenty twenty.
My other question, though, in this is where we haven't got, I, we haven't got a new fees bylaw, because we haven't passed that, we just gave it first reading. And then we're repealing the fees bylaw from two thousand and nineteen, so we don't have one in place then.
This isn't the fees bylaw.
This is.
So, okay.
It's under utility rates.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is to get rid of the, okay, gotcha.
Get your head in the game, come on.
I was reading it off. Okay. Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Yeah, do we wanna have a second, Counselor Rose?
The council give second reading to bylaw zero three, two thousand and twenty, to the repeal of, of bylaw zero five, two thousand and nineteen, this twenty eighth day of January, two thousand and twenty.
Okay. All those in favor? Carried. Um, yeah, if you'd like. We'll keep going.
The council give unanimous consent to proceed to third and final reading to the repeal of bylaw zero five, two thousand and nineteen, reading this twenty eighth day of January, two thousand and twenty.
Alright, any, everybody on board? All those in favor? Carried, so we can go ahead with our third and final reading.
That was it, unanimous consent.
No, that was the consent to proceed to third and final reading, because you can only do three readings if everybody agrees, and you have to ask that question. So, we now have to go to third and final reading.
Now you can vote now.
Counselor Rose, finish it off.
The council give third and final reading to the repeal of bylaw zero five, two thousand and nineteen, this twenty eighth day of January, two thousand and twenty.
All in favor? Opposed?
Why are we looking at me like that?
I knew that.
Yeah, I know, so.
Okay, move into item ten point six, Hiring and Firing of the CAO.
Sixty twenty five?
Get a motion.
If you say please.
Counselor Rose?
The council approve all the amendments to policy sixty twenty twenty, look internally, human resource personnel to.
It should be sixty twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
Sixty twenty fourteen, look internally, human resource personnel to advertise, and use headhunter consultants.
Even the policy number on that. Over here too, as well.
Well, it is, we're approving the two thousand and twenty.
You're approving the twenty twenty one.
Yeah, we're approving the twenty. Sixty twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
We're approving sixty twenty twenty.
Yes.
But it says the following amendment, you're approving the following amendments to policy sixty twenty twenty.
Yes.
But we don't have sixty twenty twenty yet.
Yes.
That's the policy that's in there.
So, are we just approving the new policy?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it shouldn't say amendments?
Well, we're amending it, we're, it's not a brand new policy, we're just amending it. Because if you look at the boxes, it's gonna show where we're amending. Okay? And then the motion that goes with that.
Yeah, motion number over here, on the policy also.
Okay, I can see, it's just confusing when we're saying amendments to the policy, but you're happy with that? And what are the amendments?
That, uh, we have, council has three options, and hiring is basically, you can do it internally, ask the HR person to do the. Advertise, or you can go headhunter.
You know, when I read this, I, like, I like what you're saying, but I, it did, it wasn't clear to me when I read that that was the options of council. Council can decide on hiring, you know, something like that, I'd like to see that.
Because that gave us an order, right, because maybe, and that's my thinking is.
Yeah, it just wasn't clear, like, the way it was laid out, it was really kind of confusing, because it says right off the bat, choosing a consultant. Right, that's the first point there, and then you're going, okay, you gotta choose a consultant, and then it says administration will look for a CEO. As opposed to saying, you know, number one, council has three auctions for hiring, and number one, they could look internally, number two, they could, uh, advertise and market themselves.
Him? Would that be enough, if you just amended it with options? One, choose a consultant, two, administration, uh, that's not gonna work either.
Or just put or, or, or. Choose a consultant, or. And or.
And or.
And or.
So, does it have to say look internally, or just look, like, we're not saying that it has to be an internal hire, it's just we wanted the ability to not have to pay a headhunter and advertise locally or our own, like, we wanted to advertise ourselves, that was it.
So, two points should be administrative options?
Is to look, look and advertise.
Look internally, look locally.
Advertise as we see fit, kind of thing, basically.
So, it'd be, yeah, look internally, or locally, I think is what would fit. And that, that means our needs, that we can look within our, what we have here, or we, because the grass is always greener, right? You never see the person that lives right near town that can do the job that you're, uh, advocating for.
Should we flip two and one? So that you, 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 it's like which way you're gonna go first, and then council passes the resolution on which way you're gonna go?
Yeah, I don't think the consultants should be, like, if we have to do them in order, that certainly shouldn't be our first choice.
Because I'm thinking, give us a choice first, and then we'll pass the motion, which way we wanna go with it.
Can it just say human resource personnel to advertise the following, like, basically, all we want is the option to advertise without having to use a consultant, that's great.
Yeah, the headhunter slash consultant if you have to ask, right now, it's, that's what they have. Yeah, the headhunter slash consultant would be absolutely last, right now, it's, that's what they have to work with. So now with this, it'll give us a chance to do A, look internally, B, locally, C.
Yeah, I think it should just say, you know, that we have three options, and there, any of them can be used, because it can be out the recommendation of whatever council, we don't wanna tie the hands of, so this particular council says we wanna advertise and not go through a headhunter right away. The next council may say, go to headhunter right away, we don't really wanna even advertise, we don't wanna go through that process, right? So I don't think it should be a three-stage thing, it should just be, there should be three options, and council of the day can decide how they want to.
So.
Because in the past, the reason why. Yeah, or, yeah, just as long as it says or, cause I think that this was created from a recommendation from one of the reviews, based on the fact that they did not, that there wasn't a satisfactory job of hiring C A Os in the past, right? So they, they forced the council's hands to have to go to a head.
I think if you clarified in the purpose of the policy, if, if that's clarified in there, of council's options to.
I, I think it needs some work, and even the, the purpose of this policy, when you read it, it says to ensure there are clear guidelines for council members regarding the hiring of the town C A O using a consultant, so it's telling you right there, this is your guidelines for how to use the consultant to hire. So I think it just, there's quite a few little changes that need to be made, I, I would suggest maybe we send it back and.
So the purpose would really just be, uh, to have, um, to have options prepare, or to present options for council in hiring?
It's regarding the hiring of the town's C A, the hiring or firing or termination of the town C A O, period, that's the purpose of this policy.
You don't need, you, you take up the phrase using a consultant, the hiring of the town C A O, or the termination of the town C A O.
Yep, take that right off.
Yeah, I know, it's looking direction to what you guys were saying.
Yeah, and I think, like we said, starting with the, the town, the council has options on how they want to proceed, the three options are this.
So you gotta work on that one point O, which is, uh, behind you right away.
That's right, and I like that they put in some of the key places to advertise, somebody has done some work in the past, and they know that it's, uh, there. So that's good, and then also, you know, all of the things that you wanna do in hiring, they kinda listed them under the consultant's approach, but it's not really a consultant's approach, but, uh, you know, as you move ahead, these are things that you've gotta consider when you're hiring, whether you're using a consultant, or you're doing it internally. H R, those are just key considerations when you are hiring, and C are key steps, is what it really is, it's not a consultant's approach, it's just key steps, whether it's external or internal.
So do you have enough information from us, or do we need to go another half hour on this discussion? Are we good?
Alright, anything else? Seeing none? Well, we have a motion, we have to, to vote on it. Okay, we have a motion to accept this policy, all those in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. So should we make a motion, Counselor Long?
I move that we send back the, uh, policy sixty twenty fourteen slash twenty twenty, back to administration to rework with the proposed changes.
To the bylaw review committee.
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed?
I saw, I saw the pen, you want to give these cautious.
You gotta be careful with your sympathize, you can get into trouble. Okay. Item ten point seven, the municipal emergency management bylaw. Alright, Counselor Long?
That council give first reading to bylaw zero four dash twenty twenty to the municipal emergency management bylaw, this twenty eighth day of January twenty twenty.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, this is part of the review that, uh, Vice Daley and Ken Haralco come and completed on the town, and found out after the review that our bylaw wasn't up to municipal standards, from the changes in that M G A and that, so, he sent me a template of one that basically they had approved, so we made the changes in there, and this is the policy that we have to send back to him after it's been approved by council.
So we've had one before, but this just updates it?
Yes.
Now, again, when we were talking about these things, I'm just curious, like with the, the other bylaw, we talk about amending the previous one, and we had sort of that, or does it say to? It repeals the other ones by this one? Oh yeah, and all amendments are repealed, yep, I see, okay, good, that's what I wanted to see. Alright, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Someone wants to go to auction number two? Counselor Rose?
The council give second reading to bylaw zero four twenty twenty, to the municipal, municipal emergency management bylaw, this twenty eighth day of January twenty twenty.
All those in favor? Good, we'll get somebody different this time. Okay, we gotta back to Counselors. I saw his fingers on.
Alright. Is it the unanimous one I have to say?
Yep, yeah, unanimous.
Oh yeah, it is, option three, sorry.
Oh no, you don't have, no, I'm making a motion.
Okay, well, get your motion going, and then we can have a discussion that you've got no one.
Fourth bylaw of twenty twenty.
Let's get the motion.
That council give unanimous consent to proceed to third and final reading bylaw zero four twenty twenty, to the municipal emergency management bylaw, this twentieth day of January twenty twenty.
Alright, good, now we had some discussion there, good.
The discussion is, so this is, the bylaw number is zero four.
Yes.
Of twenty twenty, correct?
Correct.
Not April.
No, it's the fourth bylaw that this would. Alright, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is carried. And last, Counselor Long to bring it home, he started it.
That council give third and final reading to bylaw zero four dash twenty twenty to the municipal emergency management bylaw, this twenty eighth day of January twenty twenty.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, thirteen point one.
It's just a.
Need a motion on the C A O's list, Counselor Court, right?
The council received the C A O's Brian Martinson's report and action list for information.
Alright.
Way to go, Brian, go get him, buddy.
I think we missed one.
What, what did we miss?
Ten point seven point four, on the bottom of page. No, sh, it's not the emergency bylaw, it's, should be committee. Uh, page seven out of ten, oh, I'm looking at the minutes, I'm sorry. That R F D's not in here. Well, I did do an R F D for this, but it's not in the all net system.
Which, which one, which one are you looking at?
Ten, it's motion, it's motion, oh, we didn't number him yet.
Well, you know what, I think I see what you're looking at.
Ten point seven.
Option five, the council direct administration to rename the disaster service committee?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't get to keep going.
To the municipal management committee. But that wasn't really even discussed, it wasn't. Yeah, that's another.
To meet the government's naming.
Yeah, we just need a motion to rename the committee.
That's all. Same page differently.
Yeah. We just figured we'd add it into this, just to expedite.
Yeah, it's a bit of a separate, uh, okay, so do we, I guess, this is a pretty straightforward one, otherwise we'd ask for an R F D for it, but anybody complain about just adding it in? Seeing none, okay, I made the motion to change the name from disaster service committee to emergency management committee? Municipal, thank you, emergency management committee, all those in favor? Carried.
Way to go. Employee of the month for you.
Okay, back to our, uh, C A O's report, you made the motion on that one? Okay. Anything to add to that, Brian?
In the last week, besides this, I've, uh, received the update from municipal affairs on deficiencies that the two gentlemen came and spoke to council on. Kevin Miller, and regarding a review on myself and council on how we're. Um, I do, they, what they did is they just, basically, they did me a call, and they talked about, there was thirteen items in there that they felt that we have to improve on, and I'll just give you an example of one, and it's very minor, it was to procure an interest, and what they did is they took samples of our minutes, and they would take them and review them, and Mayor Pansett declared a curricular interest on, uh, on the college information, but he left the meeting, which we did everything okay, the only thing that we should have had is I should have had Nancy, when she was doing the recording, he's gotta state the reasoning of why he's declaring that curricular interest. Like whether it's monetary, that's his employer, whatever would affect him, that's, that, that has to be recorded in, in the motion. So going forward, I told him, I said, since I've been in this chair, there's probably been only two or three that somebody has declared, so they told me I had a year to correct the deficiencies that, the thirteen deficiencies, so I said, how do I do that going forward if we don't have nobody declaring? And he said, send me a letter stating whatever the item number one, and going forward that you will record in the minutes, the reasoning of your current curricular interest, and he said, that would be good, so, it's, some of them are very minor, and some of them are on the tax row, he, they said they noticed where we weren't, um, listing on our tax row where uh, the date they were mailed out, but they're going back after talking to the tax clerk who was there, it's on the front page up in the right-hand corner. So I called them back right away, so that they're taking that off of the, part of the list that we have to approve on.
So you didn't want thirteen anyways, see?
Yeah, so, so, they're, they're very minor, so there we, as we go through them, um, we have eight weeks to respond, I have eight weeks to respond after I hear back from municipal or the, the. On the report, so, um, I'll send the letter back, and basically give them a timeline, and then we have a year from that date to complete the whole.
Tell them we're having an organizational review.
Counselor Long?
So the, the rationale for someone to have to give the reason is what? Because we can't, we can't question, we can't force someone to say, you're in a conflict of interest, which couldn't be curricular interest. So, if they give the interest that they say as to the reason why, they could still declare that conflict of interest and walk out, and not have to vote on a contentious issue. Cause we can't say, no, that's not, that's not a curricular interest, the person.
That, that person has to decide that.
That's right.
But I, I think they wanna know, for example, he walks out because it's.
And I, and his rationale was that this council would understand it, the next council might understand it, but in fifteen years down the road, if somebody's reading the minutes, and they read that, that Mayor Pansett walked out, they said, why would he walk out? Basically all in motion.
Was there anything else from that, uh, report that dealt with, uh, council and what we did?
Too many sidebars, especially on that side.
At this side?
That's what they wrote. Too many.
He pressed the red button a lot.
Okay. Anything else for our C A O on his, uh, action list and report? Anything on the development front?
Uh, nothing, the only thing is that, uh, the, I attended the meeting on the twenty second regarding the David Level One senior community meeting, and Counselor Rose was also in attendance at that meeting, as a citizen, and they're basically looking at three properties in town right now, and the group had made plans, or they're making plans to travel to Grand Prairie to look at some of the developers' construction up there, and buildings that he's already built, so.
That's what Debbie was saying.
Debbie's rather named the properties.
Okay, any other questions for our C A O? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Alright, moving on into our to our reports, uh, Counselor DeNacho's not here, Counselor Gilroy.
Um, just three quick things, uh, one, um, people notice in this paper, the chamber, uh, has been collecting petitions, uh, we've done quite well, and, uh, the chamber president will be handing those, uh, to, uh, our M L A, as soon as he can make arrangements to do that. Um, we have them in about nineteen different locations in town, so hopefully, that's all that. Um, as well, uh, the chamber is, uh, focusing on a, um, providing their welcome package, and after talking to our C A O, um, we need to make, or I'd like us to make a motion, um, after my report, that will allow our, allow our mayor to write a welcome letter, welcome to the community letter. The welcome package is for everyone who's coming into the community, it would be made up of a welcome letter from the Reeve, the, um, hopefully our mayor, um, any, any little, um, uh, trinket that we may wanna give, like a pin or something from our town or the county, as well as a list um, listing websites to go to, including things such as the, um, the hospital, that's been trying to get a list down there, so anybody, when they come in, they'll know specifically it. And we're also, um, I have been, uh, asked, and I agreed to, uh, go as a liaison to help, um, encourage the chamber members and any businesses to put in coupons, where it doesn't cost them anything, but it gets people to come down. Where it doesn't cost them anything, but it gets people to come down town and see our businesses or to invest in our businesses. Um, as part of the package and we're hoping that, or the chamber is hoping that what they will do is, um. The town and the county will keep this envelope, which is not going to be a big envelope, uh, and hand it out. As a welcome to anybody as they, uh, put a new hook up there for utilities, they figure that's the easiest way to figure out who's new in town. Is to then offer that as a welcome package when someone signs up. They don't, they don't want any, they don't need to know who signs up, that's nothing to do, it's just, you sign up. Here's something as well, a welcome package from the town. So that's what we're working on, those two things. Uh, as I said, we need, uh, a, a motion so that the, uh, mayor can. Write a letter and administration, if they would like, can put in, can deal with the welcome package as they see fit. Is that pretty much Mr. Martinson?
We could like, uh, bring it to the next meeting with our RFDs and we'll deal with it. Yeah.
Okay, it would have been within the RFD this time, but our CRO is going to do it this way. So. Um, the watershed committee is, uh, is doing well. Um, there's a couple of other, the biggest thing would be February the fifteenth. Uh, Father Day weekend, uh, they will have their third annual, uh, Kids Can Fish in Juiceard. And I will, uh, I believe I have the posters online that I can send to you, but they're also putting around a number of different places. Uh, so they're very encouraged on that one. And the, uh, on, on, um, February the eighth. Uh, the Aboriginal Interagency is finally able to do their round dance over at the Eagles Nest. And they should be all, I should be able to flip, uh, an email to anyone. Who requires information, but they've already are putting posters up around the area. And I was very happy and to represent unofficially, unofficially represents our, uh, our committee. Uh, yesterday at High Prairie Elementary, reading to the great force. And then being able to tell them that they could become county councillors one day if they continue their studies and stuff like that, the way the mayor did it last year. And, uh, so, uh, I think that's pretty much it, uh, except for, I'm sure the mayor's going to have updates. As to how the telephone conversation went with our, with AHS as a doctor situation. And I went over time, yes, I know. However, even importantly. But I, I'm very pleased with, uh. What we've been able to accomplish for the medical community itself in our town now. And, uh, I do my verbal or verbose, uh, report for information.
Any questions, Counselor Stanos? Have you attended the round dance yet?
February eighth.
I have, I have attended it, uh, twice before. And, uh, of course, this one is going to be on the eighth of, uh, February because, uh, there were some problems. Uh, in organizing and the faucet moved it to the, this time. So you have the round dance in February and then the very beginning of May, we will have, uh, uh, we will be hearing a lot about it as well. But we will be hearing about the powwow. And the only other thing there would be, if you go back to the chamber report, we will have a copy of what the welcome, uh, package will look like at the gun show.
Uh, I had one question, how many signatures on the petition do you know?
Still adding up all the pages, there's quite a few. Uh, depending on where we put them, uh, they were very well received. Others, uh, were not as well received and, uh, one or two places misplaced them. But the, it was one of the few times that we've actually done it where we put it into an actual store or, um.
So you don't have many signatures.
Um, I saw quite a few full ones, which would be three or four pages and a number of places actually a two or three. I can report back on the one I actually count them before we give them to our MLA.
All right, anything else? Seeing none, he moved his report for information, all those in favor? Let's carry it. Uh, what are we on topic around? Counselor Law.
Counselor Law. Um, attended the, uh, bylaw review committee, um, so you went through a lot of the bylaws we've. Worked through, uh, again, Marion's just done phenomenal job, so thank you. Um, also, again, just a reminder for folks, uh, February eighth, as well as the round dance, uh, from eleven to one is the winter walk in JC Park. Um, in conjunction with Alberta Health Services and High Prairie Beautification. And so they encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the day and, and, uh, from eleven to one, we do a walk. Um, one other thing I brought up before, just. Uh, and I don't know if it was at a council meeting, but I think so, uh, the recycling bins. Um, and, and trucks coming in and just dumping them all in one truck. And I've had another person tell me that that's happening, that they, they sat and watched. The recycling bin truck come in and grab cardboard and then went and dumped. So they're not sorting there.
They're sorting it.
They are sorting it slate, okay. I would let them know that.
And they did have, uh. They did have a recycling bin behind the, uh.
Of course.
Subway. You'd asked that question previously.
Yeah.
I forgot to get back to you, but they did have a bin there that they also dumped into that.
Okay.
Into that truck, it wasn't garbage gear, but.
It was reset, okay, I'll, I'll let them know, thank you. And I move my report for information.
Uh, just to let Counselor Law know that, uh. My manager, Rosen Facilities, Mr. Denty, sent your wife's email and you can either know that the walking trails will be. Cleaned on that Saturday morning, we made arrangements with our employee to come in there, if it tasted snowed overnight, but. It would be cleaned first thing in the morning for the walk and I think they're in discussions right now cleaning an area down there and opening the gates. I don't know if they can farm a toboggan hill with the snow blower or not down there, but. I think they can try to work on something, so. They're talking about it, so.
No. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions for him? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carry it. Uh, over to me. All right, I had a few things and, uh, Counselor Gilroy made mention to, on the seventeenth, we had a. Telephone meeting with some of the, uh, AHS, AHS reps, uh, from the North Division and, uh. Counselor Rose in her written report lists who we were meeting with, uh, so I won't repeat them all. But, uh, the end result of that was the talk about, uh. Being able to recruit doctors to the community and specifically to the High Prairie Medical Clinic. And for doctor privileges, uh, going into the hospital. Uh, we had a good, long discussion, they just today sent back a response to that, uh, meeting. Listing the concerns and where we're going to go from, uh, from there. It's a draft, they want our feedback and then we're going to send it back to them and then we'll have a written record of what we want, so. Uh, take a look at that and give me any feedback, uh, Counselor Gilroy, Counselor Rose. I sent it out, yeah. So just so that we can get that done. But, uh, in the meantime, when I sent it to the High Prairie Medical Clinic, uh, they responded back to me and said, uh. We have been having absolutely wonderful results dealing with, uh, um. Mr. Joffe and he's the VP of Medical Director of the North Zone. And they said, you know, we've been several discussions with them and things have been going really good. So it seems like it's done some good, uh, from that and, uh, hopefully it'll keep going that way. So they're, they've been quite happy at the medical clinic with the results of that. Also had a meeting with Heart River Housing, um, dealing specifically with High Prairie. They did get a draft drawing of what the, uh, the new, um. Lodge would look like, not a new lodge, sorry, the new senior self-contained units would look like in behind. And there's some concerns because it fills the lot. And they didn't really like that, uh, so there's going to be some more discussions on what that's going to, to be. So that's, uh, that was the big thing that's specific to us. And they were going to be sending out a letter to each of the towns that are involved with their new requisition rate, did you get one, right? Okay, so it's a new rate just and they can come in and explain or if any citizens have concerns when they see that. The, the, uh, the housing requisition has gone up. They're really recommending that they get in touch with Heart River Housing and they'll explain it because it's all them that's doing it, it has really nothing to do with the town. And they'll explain why they're doing it. On an informal, uh, meeting, I met with Gord Drummond. He is the, uh, the owner and possible developer of Tim Hortons. Uh, or he has the rights to the Tim Hortons in High Prairie. And just, I basically just asked him, you know, is there anything that the town can do to. See that coming to town, we'd like to see it, and he just said, basically, that it's. Right now for him to build the franchise is too expensive. And he's trying to convince the franchise to build the building, he'll rent it from him. And go from there, uh. He said he had a meeting today with them and he was going to let me know, but I haven't heard how it's went. So just let you know that, that I'm able to get something. And on, he's very interested in coming to town, but he just can't afford it with the construction costs that it would cost him. He just, yeah, he said it didn't work for him, it wasn't good business sense, so that's where he's at. Uh, attended the last week, uh, the AUMA President's Summit. Now that was AUMA invited the, the mayor from the various urbans to come in and talk about the. Uh, provincial budget and the impacts on communities. So went down to that, it was quite interesting to, to hear where, what people are doing and the impacts and, uh. Took lots of notes, but let me just sort of highlight some of the, the big things, the, uh. What, one of the questions was, we all know all of the provincial changes, so I'm not going to go over those, but they talked about what are other towns doing? And, uh, it's, everybody's doing different things with, uh, they're doing service level reviews, they're increasing taxes, they're freezing wages, they're doing less travel. Um. They're eliminating the use of credit cards for the payment of taxes. They are, um. So, yeah, it just goes on and on with some of this stuff, but one of the interesting things that I got out of this. Was that, uh, some of the communities are putting a line on their tax bill. Uh, downloads from the province and they're putting it right on there, just to say right up front, this is.
Should be downloaded from the.
This is, this is the extra cost that you're paying because of that. Uh, and they were all saying that they were tired of getting. Bullied, uh, getting accused of being the problems, like, you know, you've heard the accusations that. Taxes should not go well, yeah, you've heard Calgary Board of Education that. They're all idiots because they, they don't know, they're going to cut some frontline staff when they lost how many millions and they go, wow, we've got no place else to cut. And they're blaming them and calling them for making poor decisions. And then they said the same thing about municipalities and that, uh, if any municipality raises their taxes. It's their fault, they're idiots, you better fire them. So, you know, like they're blaming everybody but themselves for, you know, if any tax increases come and they're. You know, the, the municipality is basically at that meeting says, we need to stand together and, uh, you know, not let them. Put down all of the other municipal governments or boards. For trying to deal with these cutbacks if they're not dealing with them the way they want to deal with, right? Or that they think it should be dealt, so that was. Uh, they, they were suggesting that maybe the municipalities get together and create a fair deal panel for municipalities. So it was an interesting, lots of interesting ideas, I don't know what AUMA is going to come out of it and do, but it was. It was a lot different than when we had those, you know, when we were discussions before. A lot of municipalities are not happy with how some of the, the changes have come around. And at the same time, I would say communities, as a general rule, want to work and work with this and. We've got to get out of the deficit, everybody realizes that, but. We just want to have, uh.
Do we need to get out of the deficit when the interest rate is like at zero percent? No, now's lots of time to borrow, god forbid.
One of the other things, uh, that I mentioned what Grand Prairie had did with, uh, they, they did that, uh, organizational review. The, one of the other communities, what they did with their enhanced policing is they funded it in mid-position. As opposed to an additional, uh, officer, because way cheaper. It frees the other officers up because they don't have to be in the office doing as much paperwork, now they can get out on the road and do their stuff. Uh, Grand Prairie, here's one for you, uh, public works people, Grand Prairie purchased a robot. That clears the trails in the winter and cuts grass in the summer. I don't have any idea what that looks like, but they were talking about that, it was kind of interesting. They talked about, uh, you know, bundling projects, uh, to get better deals. Working with like the county, if there's painting to be done, trying to bundle with them and maybe getting a better deal.
We heard a good half.
Uh, they talked about, uh. Share contracts to get better deals, they talked about, uh, yeah, they just. Uh, and one of the interesting ones that I got in here is the Chamber of Commerce rep for Alberta, they have the Alberta part of it. Said that, uh, they were recommending that if you want to attract businesses, that you get broadband into your town.
Really?
But it was just something that we were, it was just, it was a very interesting meeting with lots of ideas thrown out. Uh, some good discussion around the table. And, uh, today I had a conversation with the Children's Reserves Council around their, their funding that they were worried about. I was just wondering if they've gotten any funding or what was the status on that and.
Nothing yet.
They haven't heard anything, they said that the government, they put in the application, they got support from the other communities like Slave Lake and the Smokey River area. So that was all positive. It's gone in, now they're just waiting to hear from the province if they're going to fund it. They said sometime after February seventeenth. It wasn't on the seventeenth, it was just after, so she had really no idea when it was going to come in, but. She's thinking it's fairly positive, so. That was it, so I moved my report for information. Any questions? None? All in favor? Carry it. All right, Counselor Courtney.
No report.
Off of the.
All right, Counselor Rose.
There's a different part, there's part of it that's going to come back, but it's valid, so it's actually intended and can I add? When we were talking about this proposition, you're keeping and we're doing this discussion, can I just? And I just want to point out that. I'm, I'm pretty excited that we talked to, uh, the medical clinic and they're thrilled with sort of the support that they're getting now and the feedbacks that they're getting from AHS or from, um, Dr. Joffe. But, um, one of the things that we identified and I kind of feel like when I talked to Judy, she said that that, that's where she felt like, um, she saw some. The very next day they got support from Dr. Joffe and said that that was something that they were surprised to hear. And we identified or asked questions about the process that, um. We asked them if they thought the process was fair, if AHS owning the clinic and being the recruiters and the interviewers and the hires. Actually had a perception of maybe it wasn't the most fair process. Because we identified that maybe doctors that entered the area for their, um, tours. Felt pressured to only accept physicians after coming since they were the ones that. Were in charge of the final sale that they would come around. So sort of saying that out loud to them and having, you know, some support from other. So, sort of saying that out loud to them and having, you know, some support from other people that were on the phone like Dr. George Key saying he sort of did the same thing. Um, she felt was very much the, the straw that may have pushed him over to thinking that maybe there is a perception of unfairness and maybe they haven't been treated, treated fairly. So for me, it just reminds us that we should always, if we have a point to make sometimes, especially with politics and your high level AHS, we better make sure that we don't dance around it, that we, we actually say what needs to be said, cause I think there's people within, in this example of AHS, that maybe don't want to share all that information, they're just happy doing things the way they're doing and, and I mean, right now Joffe was something we that we're talking to and he got to hear some of our straight up concerns and genuine efforts, you know, or, well, anyway, the, the real issues that we thought may actually exist. It's easy to make a difference and they are now getting a decent level of attention and there's some of their problems are being solved, so they're happy.
What about dialysis?
Yeah, you know what, that's, I wasn't really allowed to talk about it.
No, we didn't have time to learn into that stuff either, but I think.
They got approval, they just have to use the money that they have, existing funds, which means they're not getting it. So, yeah, the sick, the elderly have to pay for their Alberta car, so, and, yeah, they're doing a great job. Everybody remind them. Four years from now.
Actually, I, I don't get, I think they need to have their, uh, the official report on AHS's, uh, on the AHS review itself has come out yet.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, and that's gonna be something.
And, um, I'll just jump to, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Rhonda, um, Josh or is it? Uh, Erin?
Erin Smith.
From the R C M P today, again about that dog handler position and everybody's updated, I know you shared something about crime with the, that there's, um, two candidates, both of them are willing to come to the area and they feel confident that one will come to the area. They're moving a recruit from Boss into High Prairie. And the dog handler will live in Boss in the housing there and they expect that that should all come together, fingers crossed, in the next few weeks. So, that's kind of good. And yes, I would love a meeting today that I will pull on, you know? Bring forward a paper report, thanks. Next council meeting, so you guys will have to listen to it all now. Unless you have questions? Do you have any question? Question, no?
All those in favor? Carry it. Counselor Stenhouse?
All I have to report on is our bylaw, we went through many bylaws and policies. And that's all I've been doing in the last couple of weeks, so I moved my verbal report for information.
Can I ask it? Um, regarding the comments we had tonight about the bee bylaw?
Yes.
So when did we, when did we make that bee bylaw, that we're the only ones in Alberta that are anti-bees?
That bylaw was brought in last year.
No, I think.
And, and I was trying to, to think about why the reasons were, it's just very hard to break it, but, uh,
I think it was the safety issue.
Yeah.
Something based on like, you know, too much about right, David.
Actually, I was on that committee that brought it in and I remember, we had a number of concerns about that. Uh, what we did, we did not just do it for the sake of not wanting to allow bees, there was considerations, flight path of bees, that we were told about.
Flight paths?
No, there are flight paths, you, you, there is, uh, we were given proper information, uh, Marion had given us a ton of really good stuff that had to do with, um, uh, allowing space for flights, so that, cause bees have to have a certain way of flying in and there were, um, other concerns about, uh, what it would cost the town to, uh, enforce any bylaws and there was about, I think there's about half a dozen to a dozen reasons why we chose what we did. And that was one thing that, when the mayor saw me, when we talked about there, I wanted to defend our C I O when he was accused of not allowing it because it wasn't enough money in it, I wanted to say, he wasn't the one to make the decision, it was the bylaw committee. And we made it on really good facts. Our C I O had nothing to do with how that came in. And I wanna make sure anyone who hears that understands that. It was the bylaw committee and we did a very impartial investigation. Now we, now you have more information, if you wanna review it, great.
I'd just lay another comment in the bylaw committee, you guys, it was great to see some bylaws coming in and keeping those up to date and yeah, like we, we got lots of those to work on, bylaws and policies, uh, to have them at every meeting is great.
You're welcome. Do your best. Marion teaches us.
That's interesting, yeah.
Any other questions for, go, one more question?
Do a bylaw for laying hens? Cause that was the other half of the whole presentation was for laying hens and it was something, went right over, so you don't know.
That's a very good question and I'd like to ask it. Um, we do, we have a bylaw on domestic animals and livestock and poultry are not allowed in the town limits.
And goats.
And, and goats, even though some people would love to have a goat in their backyard.
Who would love to?
Oh, Vancouver, Vancouver has laying hens in their backyards, cause they're progressive.
They've got the, you know, the greatest counselor of all time in here.
My daughter lives in a community in B C, and it's like Juicard maybe, but I mean, it's, like it's got regular sized lots, like thirty and probably more like fifty foot lots, so I mean, you're close enough to your neighbors, right? Some of them are bigger and they've got double lots, there are some odd sizes. But seriously, going for a walk in that community, there's laying hens, lots of people have hens. They have alpacas, they have horses, they have, like, it's just the oddest little community and there's deer, a lot of deer. But people in their yards actually have all sorts of different animals, like it's, it's like mini farms on half of the properties.
See, that's interesting, cause I wanted to bring that up going through the interminisical plan. On,
Probably a question.
About spray, weeds spraying and stuff. Did you ever consider bringing in goats?
Oh, for weeds?
Goats can have a spray, they have hard time with the handle.
You need the weeds, like.
Yeah, I have a community that just does that, yeah.
They bring in goats to eat the weeds.
Going London.
Don't we look into that for us, will you?
Okay, we had, uh, did you move your report?
For information.
All those in favor? Okay, carry it, now we have one thing that, uh, our C I O just highlighted, we need to nail down the budget meeting. Uh, so, have that discussion nailed down?
Basically, more than I had seven.
Okay. I cannot be there.
Are we spanking?
Come on.
We can have a live body.
I, I can't, I cannot attend meetings.
Psycho, can you make tomorrow meet?
Yeah, I can, I already set it right.
And we have four left for today.
Can you make it? Can you make it?
More than I can.
Yes.
And did they have a draft on?
Yes, you gotta make it.
But we can't.
But I'll send an email out tomorrow and I'll let Counselor Gilroy that if you review it, can you have any questions? Send the questions to me and we can ask the, uh,
I, I just wanna make sure people will remember what kinda raises and financial restrictions when you go through budget, they're gonna happen in this community. And the fact that another town, another business is going to be a home business as opposed to a paying business and that is promo shop.
We're not approving the budget, we're just reviewing it.
It's, yeah.
It's just a review, right, we're not approving a budget for it.
No, but it does come into how you approve the spending and the amount of expenses, which is what taxes go to pay. We need to keep in mind. The economic climate before it right now. Hey, Jerry? She says she can carry it right now.
Her husband's in R C M P.
No.
Ah, that's right, okay, fine.
I can ask, I can ask for school tomorrow. I'll probably, I see.
Oh, I, uh, just saying, I think I still know I ordered new town pins with our new High Prairie. We're ready for you.
When are you getting some ice cream on outsides of town?
What's that?
Or some inside of town?
Carry it, but because of the weather or not, we didn't wanna put it in, cause they have to have, uh, four by four posts, hydrolock basically in and they gotta be within certain parameters, so.
How about the new flags that we should be having in our arenas as well as the schools that have our old flags? Are we gonna be requesting them?
We don't replace flags to schools if they wanna come and purchase one.
But do we do it for our two arenas?
Uh, they were giving it in.
Okay, I saw a little bit of Sunday.
They took them down for renovations, they're cleaning in the summer, then they were put back up and then we've got all these flags.
I can check, chief.
You have lots of flags on hand.
I think there's some.
I don't, I don't have to go look. But we have to order new ones because our logo's only bright on one side. The one goes the other way.
Alright, well, we know the meeting's adjourned, so we digress as long as you want.
Have we not made that motion?
Uh, the meeting.
That's a direct result of that letter. And that guy, that what letter was pointing through right now? He got Bryce's report, I could see that, he's gonna send us a copy and he has to send with a chandelier.